We're grateful for our school system and for people who care about our children. We pray for each family that is represented here tonight, the families of all of our students here. And whether they are in summer school or Pirate Quest or enjoying their summer and waiting for fall, we pray that you are with them, that you are guiding them. We know that you love all of us always, no matter what. We're so grateful for a caring and loving community. Bless these educators, these parents, and these children tonight. We pray this in your name. Amen.
All right, and then we have Amber Brand here to introduce Pirate Quest and lead us in the pledge.
Okay, come on. Okay, come here, Suckers. Okay, we've brought some of our Pirate Quest kiddos here today. These kids have worked so hard all summer long. We obtained a grant through the NEA to renovate a garden and greenhouse space, and these kiddos have put their sweat into it, right? Carrying big giant bags and planting and taking really good care of it. So if you ever go see it, you'll be amazed at the transformation, and these are some of the kiddos that have done that for us. So we have Max, Ben, Braylon, Carter, and Aubrey here to lead the pledge as we say thank you to them for their hard work that they've done all summer and during the school year. You guys ready? Good job, guys. I'm so proud of you.
All right, it's always hard to top introductions like that, but if we could have, call this meeting to order in a roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here. All right, we appreciate everyone being here tonight, and we have Coach Pennington here with the Poto baseball team.
Yep. For those of you that don't know, Coach Pennington is our baseball coach, and we've got a lot of our baseball kids here that I'm going to let him share why they're here, but from a district standpoint, we're super excited and proud of these kiddos. So, Mr. Pennington?
Thank you. Coming into this season, we had a lot of things that we were changing in our program, making adjustments with culture, but one of the most important things, as I told them when I got here, is that academics come first. And with this group of young men, we had 11 4.0 GPAs with a total team GPA of 3.83, which gave us the Academic All-State Championship for Poto baseball. In my understanding, it's the first Academic All-State Championship athletically for our school districts, so I'm proud of these young men. They work hard. We're continuing that work ethic as we go into the summer. We have 11 kids playing travel baseball. We've got workouts Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and we're spending anywhere between 15 and 20 hours a week on the field, just getting better and in the weight room. So I'm proud of these young men because they work super hard, but this is your Academic All-State Championship team, so.
Can we get you guys up here to take a picture? Or you guys are more welcome to come around, but when they stand up here, you will be blocked out. So why don't we have the board come around a little while and get a picture with the kiddos?
I was okay with that. What about you?
Come on up.
I didn't make the baseball team.
All right, we've got to get Ms. Adams in there.
One, two, three.
Thank you, guys.
I'm proud of all of you all in the classroom and on the field. And yeah, y'all can leave. All right, do we have any comments from the public?
We do not.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the board meeting of May 12, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Yes.
Miki?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. All right, financial reports, encumbrances, and change orders.
So if you'll turn with me to the financial reports in your packet. We will start with the May. So looking at May, at the general fund, when we compare it to last year's May, our revenue is down some, and that is due to a decrease in some federal funding. This year, we do not have the ESRA fund, so that has decreased some at the end of the year here. Our expenditures are almost the exact same as they were last year. We're up just a little bit, and this year, we were able to purchase some extra computers for our new high school STEM class for next year out of these funds. And then if you will look with me to our building, our revenue is up from last year at the exact same time, and that is just due to a timing issue with our Avalor. Last year, more funding came in in April. This year, more funding came in in May for our building fund. Our expenditures are down in building fund for the month of May when you compare it to last year. And then looking at our child nutrition, our revenue for the month of May is up being compared to last year, and that's due to an increase in our federal funding coming in. Our expenditures in child nutrition is up when you compare it to last year at this exact same time, and that is due to an increase in our OPA services that we are offering this year. And if you will flip the page over, you will see our year-to-date as of May 31st. We'll start with our general fund. Revenues are up year-to-date. That is due to our state funding, our state aid increase in this year. We also received a resource officer program. We received last year's funding and this year, all in this year, and that totaled about $183,000, so that's an increase. We also received maternity leave for last year in this year's funding. Looking at our expenditures year-to-date, you can see that they are up this year. We were able to purchase two mini buses, an SUV, a couple of lawn mowers, and some other needed items this year, so we're very proud that we were able to purchase those extra items. I do want to remind you that we do have two activity buses, and Mr. Cochran will probably talk more about it, but we did receive the two activity buses last week, and that's going to be approximately $346,000 that will be coming out for the month of June. And we also have approximately $75,000 encumbered for about 243 deaths for our high school and our PKMS, and that's going to really upgrade our classrooms this coming year. Looking at our building fund, revenue is down, and I've talked about this all year. Last year, we had a $300,000 transfer that went into building fund from a prior year, and that's the only reason why our revenue is down in building fund this year. Our expenses for building fund are up. We've had a lot of things going on in building fund this year. We have the new turf. We've made loan payments. We have the renovations for our Poto Virtual Academy that will be starting next year. We've done parking lot. We've done some drainage. We've done a lot of building fund activities this year, and so that's why our expenditures are up. And we should be receiving our red bud. I do not know the exact amount, but that will be coming in this month sometime. And then if you'll look with me in the child nutrition, revenue is up, and that is due to our federal funding because this year, we did receive free lunches through eighth grade, so it made our reimbursement go up. And with that, our expenditures also went up because we had more OPA services, more kids eating in there. Our total operations looks very good at this time, ending as of 5:31. Before I start our encumbrances, I am going to turn the mic over to Mr. Cochran to talk about an HVAC.
Yeah, so actually, it's a later line item down in the packet, I think 19, I believe, but in order to approve the PO as well, we need to talk about it first. So we opened bids last week for the installation of air conditioning and central heating air at Fancy Kid Main Gym. So we opened those bids, which you'll probably see in your packet. Destry Harbor Recreation out of Wilberton was the low bidder, and so we asked that, and he was also quickest as far as timeframe as well. So we asked that the board approve that bidder for that work that became as Main Gym.
So Ms. Adams, I think we probably, if we can, probably we should skip down and get that approved if or not, and then come back and do the encumbrances because it's one of the encumbrance items.
Okay. Anyone have any objection to moving to number 19 at this time? All right, then I would entertain a motion with regards to the bid for the installation of HVAC at Fancy Kid Middle School.
I'm going to check.
And that would be, I guess, the harbor recommended bid?
Yes, recommended bid.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Yes. All right, and then I would move back up to encumbrances.
So looking at the encumbrances, we'll start with the general fund, and we are slowing down, thank goodness, in years here. I'm just going to go over a few of them with you. On the first page, PO number 11.5, that is for some reconditioning of the SEC football helmets. At the bottom of that same page, 11.47, it is for repairs on the buses for some air conditioning. And the last one on that page is for the Medicaid stake share. I brought this to you about two months ago, and because we have changed how that we get to do all the billing, this has really pumped up more than I thought. I do not feel like it would be this full amount, but I want to make sure we have plenty in to finish the year there. And then if you'll turn with me to the second page in the general fund, in the middle, PO number 11.59, that is for a washer and dryer for our field house that I know that they will really appreciate.
So on that one, we had initially planned on coming in and putting some bigger pipes through there. Basically, they have a non-commercial washer and dryer, and they wash every kid's practice gear, so our kids don't have to take them home, which is awesome, but they just needed better than what they had. So we were planning on coming in and redoing the, adding a bigger pipe and really helping, but they ended up going with just a bigger capacity washer and dryer. So that's what they're asking for, which is actually cheaper, so we're fine with going ahead and doing that. If down the road, they do want to continue and get the bigger drainage pipe and all that, I would suggest we still do that too because we do want to make it as easy as possible. As you know, coaches spend a lot of hours after hours anyway doing that, and with them taking the time and the care to wash all the kids' clothing, it's a win. So from our end, I think that's the least we can do to try to help them out in that program.
And then the second sheet is for child nutrition, Pris Winkie, PO number 59, and that's just for heating elements at our primary school. If you open up your binders, there's two endings in there, and that's why we have to do this chain order. So the first one is, there's three POs from our general fund. It's PO 1168 through 1170. The first one is just a windshield. The second one is for service calls. And then the last one is actually for our effort to go out and do a thermal scan on the roof to see where the worst parts are for that project. And then we have one for our building fund, PO number 22, and that is on the harbor A C renovation, and that is for the HVAC at the PKMS.
Mr. Cochran, do you mind taking a minute and explaining the scan on upper, why we're doing that?
Yeah, so we have bids out right now to do a major repair of the upper pantry roof, and during the pre-bid, we, it was suggested that they do this thermal scan to identify areas where insulation has gotten wet, and so they can go in and cut those areas out, replace that insulation, and instead of kind of just guessing where potential issues might be, with the thermal scan, they can actually tell areas that have damage to the roof. So this will save us money in the long run, I mean, identifying those areas more accurately than what was previously done. So that will get done in the next couple of weeks, and then we will open bids and bring a better, to you, selected better in July to give them a move.
Is that from storm damage or?
Just age.
Age.
Because the roof is cold.
Thirty.
It's flat.
Flat. That is. And then it's all the encumbrances.
Anyone have any other questions or comments with regards to any of the financial reports or encumbrances? Now I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Discussion to vote to approve or not approve a workers' compensation insurance vendor.
Yeah, so OSAG, Oklahoma School Assurance Group, is our vendor for workers' compensation. So the price tag on that for this year would be $50,630. That is a reduction of $3,456 from last year, so we just haven't had a lot of claims, so it went down a little bit. And if you remember, all of our deductibles have gone up across the board, so you'll see that trend next, in the next item when we get to OSIG. Total price is going down, but that's because less claims, because higher deductibles.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Miki?
Yes.
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 All right, discussion and vote to approve or not approve a reservation for the district insurance coverage.
Yeah, so this is OSIG. This is our insurance. So last year, it was $495,205 for our insurance. This year, it's $462,000, so it went down as well, $33,000 savings. It went down because those deductibles, if you remember, we are now catastrophic insurance. So if it's less than $50,000, we don't even put a claim in, whereas before, it could be $2,000, $5,000, and we're putting claims in. So across the state, last year at this time, they rose everybody's deductible. Our, every school our size and bigger is doing $50,000 deductible. So needless to say, they've had way less claims this year, and so because of that, our rate is going down. We, if you look at your packet for just a minute, you'll have an entire packet in here. This is our OSIG packet, so if you open up to page one, that's a pretty good overview of where we're at, and if you look at the bottom of page one, onto page two, you'll see those are all the additions, including this building. We had a little over $3.5 million in additions, so we're adding to our policy, but yet saving $33,000. So this is a win, and there is a component in here on that very first page. If you look where it says quoted excess, $4 million limit, and there's an $8,350 charge there. So basically, what that does is it bumps our coverage from $2 million up to $4 million. So it's a double the coverage for $8,000 bucks, and we're paying $450,000. It makes sense to go ahead and double for $8,000. So talked with other, and pretty much everybody's taken advantage of that, which from OSIG's standpoint, for us, we have some things go down. I mean, $4 million will get hit pretty quick with some of our facilities, so would recommend that we go ahead and get that extra coverage as well. Any questions on OSIG and insurance coverage? There's a whole packet there. You guys are more welcome to keep that and go through it if you'd like to, but it goes on and kind of covers everything that we have. We didn't have hardly any deductible, any claims this year, so I do anticipate this continuing to go down. I think next year, we should get the BLK and the FFA damage off, because if you remember, we were able to use insurance on some of those. I think once they fall off, we'll continue to go down on our rate.
Do they have any questions or comments about the proposal from OSIG? Entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve the resolution, resolution for this insurance coverage.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the revised Board of Education Policy Book.
Yeah, so this has been a pretty long process. We've been working on this for over two years now. We are six revisions into this policy. It is approximately 340 policies inside the flash drive that you guys had and over 1,000 pages, so there's a lot here. We certainly can't go through every document tonight, but you guys have had it for over a month now. Are there any questions you guys have, anything that we need to review? We do anticipate having multiple changes on this. There's no way that we caught every single thing in this. There will be things that we come across that we need to continue to change. I did send everybody an updated version with multiple changes. As you looked through the original, you would have saw that there was a lot of strike-throughs that underlines things that just weren't done initially, so we fixed all of those. The bottom of the page had changed as well because we had the May board meeting on there, so every one of those got changed to the June board meeting. And then there were multiple actual policies that we had to update as well that weren't changed for whatever reason, and you guys did get a whole list of all of those. So we can go through any of those if you need to. I know there's a lot on there, but I do anticipate us having to come back and change this from time to time, and that's just part of our job.
Any policies that anyone wants to specifically address, or any questions that anyone has?
I don't have any.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Miki?
Yes.
Yes. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the FE policy student transfer numbers.
Okay, and so that was one of the adjustments that I sent you, but I wanted to make sure that it was a separate item because this is an item that we have to take in front of the board quarterly, and we wanted to make sure it was documented. There were some changes. We have added PK teacher as well as third and fourth grade teachers, so those numbers did change. Our PK numbers went from 108 to 126. Our third and fourth grade numbers went from 154 to 160, and you'll see that on page two of that policy. Those were the only changes.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer numbers.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Miki?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the contract agreements for the 25-26 school year.
Yeah, these are, these are all yearly items, so I'm just going to run them quickly. If you have specific questions, we can stop and go through it. But FALEd, that is a 4.4% increase in price from last year, which, as you know, 4% increase in price is actually below the average we see. So FALEd is used, I'm pretty sure by every site we have, so that's a pretty common one. The MOU with Worcester Public Schools, alternative education, that is a yearly item. They didn't send any kids over last year, but we want to go ahead and approve it again in case there's kids that need to come over from Worcester. If you don't remember, in years past, there's, smaller schools might not have the same opportunities that Poto has, so we entered into a partnership with them, and if they have small kids, they don't have a program, we do, so we accept their kids. And then the Choctaw Nation Language Department, this is a yearly item as well. We have Julie Marvin helping lead that Choctaw language class, and so this is done with the help of the Choctaw Nation, so this is the partnership agreement there. Item four is the qualified schools as a health-related service. This is for Medicaid billing. This is a pretty exciting piece for Poto Public Schools. Across the state, everybody's trying to figure out how to do Medicaid and how to bill for Medicaid. We are a pilot, and we have continued to be a leader in this area. We, man, I can't remember the exact number, but 130,000-ish, do you remember what that number was?
I don't remember.
Yeah, that we've claimed this year? That's a huge win for our district to be able to claim some of those. As you know, we've got LPCs across the board at multiple sites, so those, and speech therapists. So to be able to have that claim allows us to fund some of those items, so that's a win for us. Chatterbox, this is speech therapy, and we are hoping to, this has gone down every year, and it's much slower again this year, and our hope is that here in the coming years, we can move away from Chatterbox altogether. We've made a push to hire our own speech therapist and have him in-house, and so we've done that, and I think we're probably one away from being able to get away from third-party altogether and just have our own speech therapist in place, which to us is a win because those employees are our employees, and they work with our kids individually and not multiple districts and multiple kids. So we think it's better for our kids to serve our own kids. That's all I have on contracts. Any questions on any of those?
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the contract agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Miki? Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the renewal of the sublease agreement with Stephen H. McDonald and Associates for the 25-26 school year.
Yeah, so as you know, we can't enter into multi-year contracts or leases, so every year, we'll just bring these items back, and it's just a renewal. This is our 2019 lease agreement or bond for $10.22 million, so all we're doing is just approving it and continuing to follow the contract.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'm going to approve the renewal of Stephen McDonald and Associates.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Miki?
Yes.
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 Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the renewal of a loan with the Community State Bank for the 25-26 school year concerning the purchase of the building land located at 3003 North Broadway, Michelle Lane, and Mockingbird Lane.
Yeah, so this was the June 7, 2024 lease agreement in the amount of $2 million. It does encompass the three pieces of property listed there. Once again, just a continuation of what we've already got in place.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the lease agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Miki?
Yes.
Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the renewal of a loan with the Community State Bank for the 25-26 school year concerning the purchase of a stock trailer.
This was one that we just approved last board meeting, but we go into the new fiscal year, so we got to approve it again. So this one is, the stock trailer, it was a $10,800 lease, so it was much more, much less significant than some of these others, but nonetheless, with it being a contract, we have to continue to renew it.
No questions? Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Miki?
Yes.
Yes. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve the renewal of a loan with Central National Bank for the 25-26 school year concerning the purchase of land adjacent to 3003 North Broadway.
Yeah, so this is the land just north of us, 8.25 acres. We have a lease agreement for 1.5 million with that, and I will say, really excited that this year, we were able to put about $600,000 towards that, and our hope is next year to, if not totally paid off, come pretty close. So we're hoping that within five to six years, we can pay off the entire 3.5, but glad that we made a big chunk out of it this year.
Awesome. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with First National Bank and Central National Bank.
International, is there, yeah, both? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Miki?
Yes.
Yes. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve a bid for lease purchase agreement for the property located at 2214 North Broadway.
So that bid was in your packet. We only received one bid on that. If you remember, we, several months ago, talked with lawyers, and we needed to make sure that that was something that we had put out for bid, and we did so. We had one bid on this, and so we would ask you guys to approve that bid. The bid was for a lease purchase of a total of $700,000. The bid was for a lease purchase of a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in the form of a balloon payment at the end. So, um, but before we get to that, we'd like to approve the bid.
Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, we, we have had it appraised. Um, I, I've got the appraisal numbers. I, if I recall properly, I think it was seven seventy-five that it appraised at, and we're asking seven fifty for it. And I'll get back with you if there's anything different than that, but I'm pretty sure it's seven seventy-five.
Are there any other questions? We've got a motion on a, on the table, is there a second? Roll call please. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve a lease purchase agreement with the Gap Thirteen Church for the property located at twenty-two, fourteen North Broadway.
Yeah, so this is the lease purchase agreement that's in your packet. The only changes on that packet are in regards to the date. So, um, we would ask that we approve the, um, the contract as written with adjustments to the date. And the contract itself is a monthly payment. It's a lease, basically they're leasing it, and at the end of the seven years, there's a balloon payment. Everything that they put into the lease can roll into the, uh, balloon payment at the end. So they're incentivized to try to, at the end of the seven years, to use that money and roll it into a purchase, which ultimately is what we want. Our goal here is to, um, a couple of, a couple of things. First is to not let it get ran down, cause it's not being used. Get somebody inside of it. Any improvements they make, obviously if they buy it, they keep. Any improvements they make, if they don't buy it and decide to walk away at the end, we, we get the benefit of the improvements. But our goals are to get it utilized, and then hopefully at the end, get, get a good payment on this and be able to pay off some of the land. So ultimately, that's what we'd like to do, is get our land paid off. Say it again. So this will go into our building fund. Correct, and i- if we were to buy land, it would come out of our building fund.
Any other questions? I'd entertain a motion. Motion to approve? All right. That's okay. Roll call please. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve if a decent raise for support staff.
So this is a continuation of our commitment to our support staff. If you recall, several years ago, there was a pay raise that went out to all certified staff. So all of our teachers got a pay raise, but support staff were left out of that. So this is a continuation to that. This would put, um, in the last three years going into year four, this would be a dollar fifty raise that we've given to our support staff. We've done fifty cent raises twice now, this would be the third one. So I think what this would do is it would, it would send a good message to our support staff that we value them. And I think what it also does is it helps us retain our good employees, because we're paying competitive to everybody else. So, um, from our end, we, we don't see a, a negative here. You've seen the, the finances. We've had multiple meetings on this very topic, making sure that financially, we feel good enough to be able to pull, pull the trigger on this. And, um, I think that's one of the reasons we're gonna try to carry over, which we didn't go into, but we're probably gonna try to carry over more than we did last year. If you recall, last year, we were at three point seven million. We anticipate carrying over more than that this year, just because of these next two items. We wanted to just make sure that we're, we're in a good spot. And if for some reason, the state had some really negative issues, which they don't, we're actually gonna be funded better next year. We got some more money in our, in our funding formula. So we don't anticipate a hit at all next year. But if we were to, something crazy happened, we would still have a cushion that we felt comfortable with. So... The total cost of this fifty cent raise is gonna be an additional seventy-four thousand, four hundred dollars to our district. And that's including benefits.
I'll second his motion.
Great, roll call please. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve a two point five percent increase on the special education stipend.
So this stipend, um, the total increase with this is gonna be thirty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars. But I wanted to give Sarah Reed a chance, as our sped director, to talk about this increase, uh, from five percent to seven and a half percent.
Feel like this is kind of a continuation of what he just said with the support staff. We are at five percent right now, which is across the state. That's the requirement for special education. So, you know, we have a really amazing team, um, in special education. I don't know if you know all of them, but they're really great people. They have to be instructional experts in all, um, curriculum, you know, all areas. And they also collaborate with families, paraprofessionals, therapists, service providers. All of that, we've always been doing. But the state and federal, um, offices are really putting a lot more requirements on us and a lot more demands. So our teachers are really stepping up to that. They've done an amazing job this year with everything I've asked them to do. You know, paperwork has always been really challenging, but I feel like it's becoming a little bit more stringent because of all of the new requirements. Our team does work really hard to maintain the success of our program. And, and this increase would definitely help us ensure the retention of our great employees, our great team, and hopefully increase our chances of recruiting good team members when we need to in the future.
All right, appreciate that. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the two point five percent increase.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call please. Yes. Discussion to vote to approve or not approve surplus items.
So we have two different, well, three different items, but two different buildings. Primary surplus, primary just has some random items that they're wanting to clear out, which is great. PKMS has got seventy-five old desks. If you remember, we just, just talked about putting new desks in place. So these are the ones that are the oldest that they have. So being able to cycle through some of our, our ancient desks is awesome. And then there's also some random items on there. So, uh, once again, we're still planning on trying to get some surplus items out this summer, open up the whole back of this place and, and utilize this next year. But, um, I've talked with, uh, Mr. Ballard for sure, and I haven't chatted with everybody else, but we're gonna try to get all of our surplus in, um, in this next board meeting if we have it. That way, we can kind of get it all shipped out and start fresh next year. So, um, any questions on any of the surplus items?
I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the surplus items.
Roll call please. Facilities report.
Yeah, so, uh, we talked kind of briefly about, uh, a couple of these items already, including the Panzi Kid HVAC, getting started, and the tunnel imaging scanning for the UES route. We did receive two activity buses, full-size activity buses last week. We put them into use today, since the ball team over Charleston now. So everything seemed to be, be okay there. And then also, one other thing is, uh, the TransAct routing software and ridership piece, uh, for our transportation department. We have been using, uh, the, the routing software this summer for summer school. Had a few hiccups as, as expected, the first week or two. But the last week or so, it's been pretty, pretty smooth, as far as that goes. We were able to, uh, using the software, reduce the number of routes that we had for the summer. So we did save a little money there as well. So looking forward to using it in the fall. And I think it'll be a big benefit for us long-term.
Great. All right, superintendent's report.
All right, so I just want to go through some legislation. We do have a lot more bills that, that we kind of know what they're looking like. So I just want to go through them. There's a, there's hundreds, maybe not that many, in affected education. But there's a lot of bills, so I'm not gonna go through them all. But I just want to highlight some that are gonna have the impact, um, on Poto Public Schools. So House Bill ten eighty-seven, uh, that's the one that is giving, it's setting a minimum number of school days and a minimum, minimum number of hours, which is increased on both. For us, it really won't have an impact, cause we go more days. The only impact it could have is if we decide, we have snow days, we want to take days off. It's just, you know, we can only go down to one eighty-one on days instead of one eighty. So that'll have a small impact, but that's, that same bill, ten eighty-seven. Also, um, because of that increase, what it did is it increased our, um, salary schedule of all of our, our certified employees from twenty-five years to thirty-five years. So now, we will pay, so in one of the previous meetings, we had talked about how other schools don't pay up past twenty-five. Well, now, every school in the state is gonna pay all the way up to thirty-five, because they have to. So that'll come into play next year. It will impact us, um, but we pay over already anyway, so it will have a much less impact on us than it will other schools. Cause other schools now, if they haven't been paying over twenty-five, and someone's at thirty-two, they're gonna pay that whole difference all of a sudden. So we won't have to do that, because we already are over. So, um, and I'm probably, uh, we haven't seen the scale. When we do, we'll have to go in and adjust our, our board policy book, cause there, if you remember through there, there's one page that has a sample salary schedule. We didn't fix that in our policy book, because we don't have the salary scale yet from the state. So as soon as we do, hopefully in July, we'll be able to bring that policy book and update it with a new salary schedule. Senate Bill seven eleven, that modifies the state report card. It takes off the chronic absences, which we figured was coming. So our report cards are gonna look different next year. So from all of our, our side, I feel like, um, the chronic absent piece has kind of hurt us. So, and I feel like we've been pretty good at academic growth and, and those categories, which are just gonna be better. So I really think it's gonna probably help us. But it'll be interesting to see what happens with the report cards across the state. Senate Bill one thirty-nine, that's a big one. That's a cell phone bill, which we've been talking about for the last several months. So that is a bell-to-bell ban. That is our policy that we just approved, FNG, so there is a policy in place already. From our end, what we will do is everybody will, all of our principals at our sites, will go into their handbook, and will make sure that our school policy, which fits the state policy, is now transferred into their handbooks. And so in July, we'll be approving handbooks, and then that FNG cellphone policy will be in the handbooks. Senate Bill seven fifty-eight, that's the virtual bill. It did pass as well, so it limits the virtual days. So that will impact us as well. We've been able to take advantage of, if we have a snow day, making it a virtual day and making sure the kids have everything. I, I don't see that being able to continue the way it has. So what that really means is, we've kind of got away back multiple years ago. If we missed a day, we would have to come back to the Board of Education. You guys would have to approve either not make that day up at the end, or make it up at the end. We've kind of avoided that by doing virtual days. Now, I think we'll have to go back to that process, because we can't use virtual days. So it'll either be a day out, um, or we'll be in school. And if it's a day out, we've got to make the decision either not to make it up as a board, or make it up, which is what a lot of other schools are having to do, because they don't have the extra days like we do. So I still anticipate it not having a huge impact on us, because we would be able to just not make up some of those days, cause we go extra. Whereas other school districts do not. So other school districts that don't go any extra, that are set on their number of days, they miss school. They're making all those up at the end. So, um, a little potato-patato on that. I feel like for us, it's not gonna have as big an impact as it will on others. And then from a district standpoint, all of our sites are going to COSA this week. So we'll have law sessions, and we'll be able to dig down on what this, this is. And for us, this is always a, a big week, because we're able to sit down as an admin team and really game plan for the, the new fiscal year, um, and school year. So, so we're excited and looking forward. We're heading out tomorrow to go to COSA, so we're excited about all of that. So any questions on any of the legislation, or anything else on superintendent report?
Goodness, what are you thinking? Are you good? Okay. Any new business?
Yes, um, since the posting of the board agenda to today, we did have a, um, a hire that we would like to bring to you guys. So, uh, when we get out of executive session, we would like to bring, um, a, a PHS English teacher to the, to the addition to the new hires, and we'll talk about that in executive session, and we'd like to approve that when we come out of executive session. So PHS English teacher.
With that, I'd entertain a motion to go into the executive session. Roll call please. All right, six forty-two.
Can you all hear me now? I'm not reading all that again. But I said everyone's name that's in here that was on the agenda for hiring, so. I'll restate, though, discuss the purchase of real property pending clear title for lot 6 block 44.
I'll make a motion. Prove it after.
Is there a second?
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 You're welcome.
Yes.